Board of Trustees meeting. Please join in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join in a moment of silence for our fallen country servicemen and women. Thank you. So we're going to begin this evening's meeting with some great news from the fire department. Chief Taunton, do you want to share the news tonight about our volunteer firefighters?
Good evening, Mayor. I'm happy to announce we have two more volunteer firefighters joining the ranks. First, we have Charles Bauer. He's a lifelong resident of Garden City. He wants to continue his passion for public service as he previously was a volunteer firefighter while attending Penn State University. He currently works within the community at the Garden City Country Club and is appreciative of the opportunity to service community within the fire department. So thank you, Carson, for joining. The second member joining is currently away at college, but his name is Corwin Dunn. He's a sophomore at Fairfield University. He's studying communications. This past summer was an assistant teacher at the Garden City Community Church. He also works in lighting controls where he works from local high schools to Broadway theaters. And he's eager to join the Garden City Fire Department, continue serving his community. So thank you to him as well.
So just on behalf of the board, I want to thank these two volunteers. This Garden City, as I always say, is full of volunteers doing great things. It's what makes our community so special. But there's no volunteer position more impactful than the volunteer firefighters. So thank you for stepping up for this important role. We'll make a motion. Is there a motion to approve the volunteer firefighters?
No move.
All in favor?
Aye.
That passes unanimously. So thank you and welcome. All right, so next we will actually our orders a little. We generally do the quick comments now. I'm just going to bump that up. The purpose of this, this was added to our schedule to allow residents who are unable to attend the whole meeting, but wanted to quickly tell us something to just come up. It's a one-minute comment if you want to make a quick comment and then if you have to leave the meeting. So I'll open it up for quick comment, resident comments at this time.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Flanagan, Trustee Muldoon, Trustee Finneran, I want to thank you for your detailed comments about the, your environmental concerns last week at Nassau County Legislature. Very much appreciated. I was so disappointed at that meeting, as much as I was appreciative of your remarks, that we've heard nothing from any school board at that meeting. The PTA last fall gave a workshop on the dangers of casinos and that they target students. There was a student there from Georgetown. They target students. Haven't heard anything from, from our school board. Haven't heard, I left after about an hour. So I don't know this for sure, but I hadn't heard anything from any school board. And I'm, I don't know how the, how they think they're going to cope with, with all these cars coming in. Trustee Courtney and Trustee Muldoon again, and Trustee Mary McGuire from the library. I want to thank you for your comments at the EPA, at the Eastern Property Owners Association this past Tuesday. They were very, very informative. And Superintendent Barone, thank you also. Appreciate that you not only stayed for the meeting, you stayed after the meeting, all of you did, and answered questions. So thank you very much. And finally, Mayor, great report in the Garden City News about lead in our, in our water. Thank you very much. Very detailed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Simler. Any other quick comments from the audience?
Good evening, everyone. My name's Chris Halcom, a resident of Brixton Road. The trustees and the mayor have received an email earlier this week. I thank you for the responses that have been provided to me. We acknowledge that Strawberry Field at the north end of Brixton Road is becoming a dog run. There are persons from within and possibly outside the community who actually drive there. They let their dogs run. They have chew toys, water bowls. And it, you know, it's nice that they utilize the property, but they don't curb their dogs properly. They're not on leashes. They're not following the town ordinance. The residents of Brixton Road, of which I'm representing, and Jeff Walter is as well of that section of town, are just requesting that the sign be put up in front of Strawberry Field, indicating that they need to comply with the town ordinance basis. It's gotten out of hand.
All right. Thank you for bringing that here, and it has been brought to our attention, and we will move on that. Thanks. Any other quick comments in the room? All right, we'll move to the comments by department heads, beginning with Mr. Barone.
Good evening, Mayor, Board of Trustees. DPW will be covering in total 20 items on the agenda this evening. I'd like to direct your attention to item number 24 on the Public Works. This is a request to approve a transfer in the amount of $46,573.79 from two completed capital projects and to approve two change orders for the library HVAC project. The first change order is in the amount of $16,561.44 and is to install a standalone split unit for the circulation office. The second change order is in the amount of $45,381 and is to install two new hot water supply pumps. The hot water pumps supply hot water from the boiler, the new air handlers for heat in the winter. Item number 25 is a request to approve a transfer of $5,000 and to ratify the rental of light towers from Pratt Brothers. The light tower rentals were used to assist the police department on Friday nights. $25,000 is a ratification, and the other $25,000 is in case we extend it longer for another month. Item number 26 is a request to ratify the cost of paving work on Grove Street, Commander Limburg, and a portion of Meadow Street in the amount of $421,446.75 and to approve an additional estimated cost of $350,000 to finish paving work on Meadow Street from Boylston to Clinton. Additional work was necessary to properly complete the paving work, such as reconstruction of the pavement profile at Lafayette, additional curb replacement and base repair. The project has exceeded the approved bond amount and funding is available in the water department surplus. Item number 27 is a request to ratify a submission we made for the safe streets and roads for all grant. We have approved for the grant funding to have traffic, to have a traffic engineer consultant create a safety action plan, also known as an action plan, for the village. Action plans are comprehensive safety plans that use data analysis to characterize roadway safety problems and strengthen a community's approach through projects and strategies that address the most significant safety risks. After an action plan is created, we will then apply for grant funding to implement these projects. Under award of bids, item number 28 is a request to award the bid for extermination services to a expert at extermination, the sole bidder, at an estimated cost of $51,000. All work is performed on an as-needed basis and is based upon unit costs. Extermination services, services are utilized by both Parks and Rec and DPW. Item 29 is a request to exercise the first renewal option with Phoenix Ready Mix for the purchase of concrete. Concrete is ordered on an as-needed basis, is necessary for DPW to function, and we use it to perform various repairs and replacements. Item 30 is a request to exercise the first renewal option with Pedkowsky Precast for the purchase of various straw wheels, catch basins, and various related items. Items are ordered on an as-needed basis, again, for various repairs and replacements. Finally, I'll be covering items 31 through 34, which generally is a request to reject and rebid the contracts listed for each item respectively under the numbers. Each contract needs to be, each contract needs to be rebid for various reasons that in the end benefit the village, which is why I'm requesting rejecting, rebidding them. I'd also like to thank Irene Wa and Cassie, who help with all these bids that go out. It's a lot of work. At this point in time, I'd like to invite Mr. Carey, Superintendent of Water and Sewer Operations. He'll be speaking on items 15 to 23. Thank you, Mr. Carey.
Good evening, Mayor, Board of Trustees and residents. There were several items that Mr. Barone had mentioned that are related to water. So we felt it was best that I be here to explain. The first one is item 15, and we're requesting board authorization to create a new capital project, transfer funds, declare an emergency, and purchase equipment. This is the result of a recent fire marshal inspection where we were advised that due to new regulations on our chlorine storage that we were no longer in compliance. So it was something new. We were never informed about until this inspection came up. So we're asking the board to create the project and transfer funds totaling $114,892. And this is largely due because we have to store bulk chlorine for a 30-day period. The Health Department requires that. Item 16 is, I had, it's to ratify an emergency that was declared as a result of some sewer work we were doing along the business district here. When they were doing it, they sent cameras in and they saw a bunch of breaches that could present road collapse. So Mr. Barone and I declared an emergency. I did send a message to the board to advise you that this was coming. So we're asking for ratification of $313,072 and $15,400. It was all night work that was required. Item 17 is to ratify a water main break that was done by Merrick Utilities. That was the contractor who did the Stewart Avenue and a portion of Clinton Road water main replacement project. What had happened was there was a water main break during that project. They were already mobilized. And when they sent us the invoice for it, it was incorrectly charged against the project. When finance did an audit, they found it. So now we're asking the board to ratify that. Item 18 is a high-consumption leak credit policy. Most water suppliers have a leak credit policy for their, for their residents. And this is really not, this won't apply to residents who abuse their underground sprinklers. There's specific parameters to qualify for a, a leak credit. You have to have a letter from your plumber, a paid receipt, and fall into a specific category of what type of leak it was. It has to be verified by village staff, and it requires two sign-offs by either myself, Mr. Barone, and the village treasurer. There are two components to it. One, up to $250,000, I would have the authority under the criteria. And up to 500, Mr. Swazie, the village administrator, along with a sign-off from the village treasurer, would have the authority. We calculated the maximum of 40% because we felt that that was a point where the village still wouldn't lose money. But we have no provision right now. We'd have to come to the board each time someone comes up and they present a hardship. So anything over 500, they would still have to come to the board, but at no time would it, would the credit be considered for 40% more than what their quarterly bill is. Item 19 is accept the maintenance bond for Merrick Utilities for the water main replacement project on Stewart Avenue in part of Clinton in the amount of $3,325,000. Item 20 is for Aras Industries, accept the maintenance bond for Clinton Road to Meadow Street in the amount of 2.5 million. I'm rounding these up. Both of them are good for 18 months. The work that they've done will be, at the time if the board approves it, bonded for 18-month period. Item 21 is to purchase equipment. We need to purchase a new Metro Tech locator, which locates underground pipes for when other utilities do work and to provide a transfer from a capital equipment. We had leftover funds from the purchase of a vehicle. So it's really no budget impact on that. The cost is $3,500. Item 22 is to remain in the class-action PFAS litigation and not opt out and for the village to accept a settlement if offered. And that is for the Tyco Company for PFAS, similar to 23, that is for BASF, requesting the board to stay in the class-action litigation and not to opt out and accept the settlement if offered. The firm, the legal firm that's representing the village recommended this, and our special counsel also reviewed it and provided, provided a memo. These are identical to the previous opt, opt-in or stay-in from DuPont and 3M. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Just one wording thing I want to clarify on those two PFAS settlements. I believe it's not opt out and not to accept?
No, to accept if offered. So this, this was a, the court, they mediated these settlements from these companies, manufacturers for these chemicals that contaminated our water supply that we, you know, had to provide treatment for. So by not opting out, we're telling the court that we're staying in and we're going to potentially accept the settlement that, that's offered.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I got, I got one quick one for you. Can you give us an update on the lead line situation in town? I have a lot of people ask me about that and, and give them a little bit of clarification of where we're at.
Sure. So we, we were mandated to send out the letters last week. Probably took over 100 phone calls this week to various residents with, with questions. Our, our inventory that's mandated by the EPA and Health Department is due on October 16th. We're well ahead of the game. We're, we're entering the final home stretch here. We, we've done a lot of public outreach, home inspections. We, we've offered free sampling to see if lead was in any individual resident's drinking water. You know, we're never going to get 100%. We still have a lot of unknowns. You know, at the end of the day, we're still going to have several thousand unknown or lead lines. You know, the tricky part here is that the village doesn't own those lines, and it's up to each individual homeowner to, to replace it or put a filter in. And that, you know, it's a big expense, unexpected expense for some. So we're discussing some options right now, but that's where we are. We're going to have a full, a, a full meeting at the next EAB in October. I believe it's the 24th, October 24th, dedicated to, to the lead.
Great. That's great. Thank you for that information. And again, we would encourage everybody to, that has a lead line or if they have any questions to reach out to you guys and, you know, and take care of that if they possibly can at all, you know.
Sure.
Thank you so much. Thanks for all your help, Stan. You're doing a great job. I appreciate it.
Up to, up to 40% of the quarterly bill. So 250? Let me just, let me find it here.
Right.
No, no, no.
$250.
I'm sorry. I wonder why I got a couple looks. It's $250. No, I wouldn't, I wouldn't ask for that kind of authority. 250 for myself or Mr. Barone and the village treasurer, and up to 500 for Mr. Swazie and the village treasurer to approve.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you, Mr. Barone. All right, Ms. Wa. I'm sorry, Ms. Tang.
Mayor, Board of Trustees, Finance Department has four items to report on tonight. The first one is number one, request to close capital project and transfer funds. We are requesting the board authorize to close the capital project platform tennis courts renovation and transfer the remaining funds, which are ARPA funds, in the amount of $3,073.80 to the ARPA liability account. Number two is appropriation of termination reserves. We are requesting that the board authorize to appropriate $14,602.12 from reserves from compensated absences to termination payout for three employees who have left Village Services. Number three is tax cert settlements. We have five settlements outlined by council that we're seeking board approval for and one case which has been discontinued. And the fourth item is deferred compensation audit report. The village has received and reviewed the final audit report from PKF O'Connor Davies for the deferred compensation plan for the 2023 calendar year. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Givinelli.
Good evening, Mayor, Board of Trustees. The building department has no items on the formal agenda this evening, but I just want to update the board on the performance for the month of August. The building department has performed 366 building inspections, issued 118 building permits, addressed 22 complaints, and collected a fee of $210,000 for the month of August. That's all I have on the performance, Mayor. Just wanted to give the board a heads up on the Edge Mayor Firehouse. I spoke with the architect and engineers yesterday, and I should hopefully receive 100% completion next week. After that, we will review it, and it would go to council, and then we try to put this project out to bid. And that's all I have this evening. Be more than happy to answer any questions.
Just a quick question on 224 Seven Street, the one where the scaffolding has been up there for maybe three years now?
Going on three years now, yes.
It's kind of crazy. What's, what's?
So the status on that, they finally came in with the building permit. They had this building that's run by NY Langone. They had a, some kind of difficulty with the contractors backing in with their insurance paperwork. They had a falling out with the original contractor, so they came in with a building permit with a new contractor. And I've been pushing that project along, and they're saying that they should be done by the end of the year. They probably need about two to three months to complete that project. That project is replaced, removing and replacing the corking around the windows and a little repointing on the brick. So hopefully within the next couple of months, it'll be done. Let me get that scaffold out of there for you.
That'd be great for the tenants there too that have been dealing with it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Givinelli.
You're welcome.
And actually, before we begin, you know, I probably should have shared this at the beginning to avoid being, duplicate our statements. I wanted to share a quick update on St. Paul's because you'll probably be touching on that as well, the meeting coming on Monday. So I just wanted to announce that Branstad or Carol will be back in Garden City this Monday to present the findings and share analysis on the recent recreation survey. All residents will be able to view this on Zoom. The presentation will be made to the village board, the St. Paul's Mayor's Advisory Committee, and the Rec Commission, along with key recreation staff and Mr. Blake. It's, it's an exciting time as we hear from professionals about the recreation survey results that will be used to shape a 10-year plan for our village. We can all agree that recreation and cultural offerings in the village are a key to what makes Garden City the most desirable village in community in Long Island. BCI will share ideas on how this data can help inform the St. Paul's survey, which is planned for the fall. Though the future of the St. Paul's building is not a topic of this presentation. After Monday's presentation, BCI will host smaller meetings as they kick off the envision phase on the path to a recreation master plan. So I just wanted to get that online because I know there are always a lot of St. Paul's questions. And sorry to jump ahead of you, Mr. Blake. I'll turn it over to you now.
Mayor, I'm glad you mentioned St. Paul's. I just want to bring it up to the board to speed on the environmental from DMB. They completed all their sampling right now, so we're expected to report on the environmental with the full report and cost estimate by mid-October. So once we have that, I'll circulate that to the board for review.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Blake?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everybody. Recreation has one item on the agenda tonight. It's number 14. It's a request for attendance. We are requesting to send our arborist, Joe Yamata, to attend the New York State Arborist's Tree Risk Assessment Qualifications Course. It's being held November 20 to 22 on Long Island. Exact location has not been determined yet. There will be no travel or lodging involved in this, and the estimated cost of the attendance is approximately $890. And funds are available in parks, travel, and training. As the mayor indicated, there is a great meeting coming up Monday night with BCI. We have received not just the survey results, but on, I think, Monday, we received their assessment of our facilities. And again, as I've said all along, their work has been pretty good. It's very detailed. They went down, they drilled down on a lot of detail. And as I mentioned last night at the EAB meeting, they're hard graders, but that's what we want. We want a clear picture, warts and all, of how we can do better. So we're excited to be looking forward to getting that. Lastly, from my desk, the homecoming parade is Saturday, and I hope everybody will come out. And I understand there's going to be a float that has a big fuzzy green alligator on it in the parade. So come on out and watch the homecoming parade. I think it starts at 1:00 on Seventh Street, and it'll end up at the high school where there'll be some other activities and a football game afterwards. That's all I have this evening. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
There is also an event the next week that you want to mention?
Oh, you're right. Yeah, how could I forget that? On Saturday, the 28th of September, we'll be hosting the semi-annual Old Timers' Day over at Tullamore Park. And for those of you that grew up in the village, particularly during a certain era, and I'm not going to say what it was because you'll all yell at me for calling you old. The playground program is going to be celebrated, and we have some of our old park directors coming back. Bobby Gasparrello is organizing the event. Billy Harrison is involved. Wally Cook is involved. And it's going to be a celebration of what is and was an amazing program, which is the Summer Playground Program, which has been a tradition here since the early 1960s. There will be softball games. There will be tug-of-wars. I understand there might even be a couple of table golf boards out so you can brush up on your table golf skills. It's going to run from 12 till 4. You're all welcome to drop in. There's no charge to come down and watch. If you'd like to register and get a commemorative t-shirt, it's $45 at the door. That $45 will also get you some hamburgers, hot dogs, and soda at the park. And I believe that afterwards, they may be going down to a local watering hole for some refreshments. Should be a great party. It's always a lot of fun, and may everybody play and have fun. I'm not pulling too many muscles.
Thank you, Mr. Blake, for coming to the EAB meeting last night and giving us, providing a very good update on the field treatment. And the results are promising from what we heard. Could you just give a quick update here as well? The hybrid and then what's coming back here?
Not a lot has changed since, I think, two meetings ago when I went through it. But the good news is, the short and sweet is, closing the field for the previous 12 months, one-third of the St. Paul's field yielded terrific results. We have a nice deep green grass coming in where we didn't have that before. We've had some great help from a couple of the local golf clubs. The greenskeepers from both Cherry Valley and the Garden City Golf Club have come over and made some suggestions. It seems that a lot of the, the things that we added in, the processes we added in last fall, such as the deep tining of the field, the using the lime to sweeten up the soil, and increasing the amount of natural fertilizers that we put down have really helped out. We are also encouraged by some of the other work that we did, including sodding around some of the goal areas. And we have now closed off another third of the field. That will be closed for a full year. And the ongoing program right now will be that no part of the field will ever go more than two years without being closed for some work. And we're hopeful that after five or six years, we'll be able to cut that back a little bit. By that time, the grass should be much, much denser, much thicker. And for those that are interested, we did remove the baseball field, and that area is being seeded and leveled and graded and will allow us a little more flexibility in moving the fields around so we won't wear out the same areas over and over again. So overall, the turf is getting better, and we anticipate that it will continue to get better.
Yeah, so, sorry. One more thing. At the end of June, I know we, I received some correspondence from residents about poison ivy. You know, one was in the park and it was coming over into the yard of the house. And then also someone, some, someone else was talking, was mentioning there was poison ivy on the, like, near a bench in the park. So I know we have been emailing over the summer, and you took some actions too. Thank you very much for that. And could you just give everyone a quick overview of what we did over the summer? And maybe we could get a couple of more quotes and what you noticed when you were surveying the parks with the, with the company.
Well, first of all, there's, there's poison ivy throughout the village. This shouldn't come as any surprise to anybody. It grows wild. It's very hardy. It's as, as bad as- It's as bad as English ivy. It's hard to eradicate. You can't just spray it once and walk away. It's difficult to cut, because people get infected with it. And we've had a couple of employees out this year. The main growth that we wanted to take care of was over at the south end of Grove Street near Lindbergh Street. It was quite a large amount of ivy. It was growing into a neighbor's yard. So we had a purchase order out to Brightview. They had come in and sprayed that area. They've done two applications of the material, and we have a one-year warranty on the work. So if it does come back next spring, they'll come out and respray. The other areas that we identified, we cleaned up some small areas that we could. We are out looking for additional prices, because procurement policy here is I have to have three prices based on the cost of the project. I have heard back from one company that is not willing to come in, so that counts as one price. And I'm waiting on another price from one more vendor, and then we will come back to the board with a proposal to get the rest of the areas cleaned up.
Thank you.
Sure.
Hey, Paul, good evening. I got a couple of quick ones for yourself and for John. Number one, recreational meeting we had there the last week, I believe. Feels like forever ago, but it was, I think it was last week. We had a great recreational meeting, and thank you for that. We have a great group there, and I think we're going to do some great things the rest of the year into next year. So thanks for that. We had a great meeting this week, myself and Paul and John Barone at the cottages in regards to the senior center and things that we're trying to rectify that's been ongoing for the last couple of years and the cleaning of the exterior of the building and giving it a good bath and power wash and the grounds and stuff like that. So can you guys, John, if you want to take that one, or Paul, just give the residents a quick update as to the game plan in regards to the flooring, dehumidification of the basement, and the exterior of the seniors, for all our seniors who deserve it?
Sure. The floor issue is limited to three locations in the building, and it is, trustee Muldoon was good enough to come over with us and walk through the building. It is a simple cut that needs to be made in the edges of the flooring. They have the flooring up too close to the walls, and they don't have room for it to expand. We've reached out to the initial contractor, Preferred Construction, and put them on notice that they have to come and make repairs to that floor. John and I have talked about this, and if we don't get any response from them, I would say in the next week to 10 days, we will be taking action to pull our maintenance bond on that floor, which will allow us to use their money to hire another contractor to repair the floor. The underlying problem to the floor, as Mr. Barone and trustee Muldoon both know, is excess moisture in the building, and that comes from underneath the building in the crawl space. It was never properly equipped with dehumidification equipment. There are not enough vents in the foundation to allow the air to constantly rotate out and circulate. So we have a proposal from our Energy Mechanical, which is our HVAC contractor, to install two large dehumidifiers under the crawl space of the building. We will be writing a purchase order to them tomorrow to have that work done. We are convinced that once we have the dehumidifiers in place and the floor has been successfully trimmed at those three kind of pressure points, that it will stay down and be useful and give us a good, long service as we originally intended.
Great. Thanks, Paul. And then on the exterior of the building with the washing and cleaning, I think we can get that, as we talked about, taken care of. Look at our schedules in October, by the end of October.
Absolutely.
I think, and that'll be great. So keep the seniors happy and for once and for all, rectify this floor issue that unfortunately we've been dealing with. So thank you for everything, John. Thanks as well for that meeting.
You're very welcome.
Thank you, guys.
All right, thank you, Mr. Blake. Commissioner Jackson?
Thank you, Mayor, Board of Trustees. I have one item on the agenda. Please, Department, request an authorization to purchase 14 more license plate readers from Flock. We have, currently, we have 12 from Flock. We have two county stationary, these are stationary cameras, and we're asking for 14 more. Flock has been very helpful for us. We have some numerous cases with it, and they will help increase the safety of the village. We also have two mobiles and the cars from another vendor. I'd also like to give out the numbers for August. We have a total of 2,005 calls, 77 case investigations, 26 arrests, 148 medical service calls, 79 accidents, 1,136 traffic tickets were issued, 1,863 parking tickets were issued, seven appearance tickets were issued, and we had 10 vehicle impounds. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
The license plate readers, how are they set up?
Okay, they're, most of the time, they're set up on electrical resources. We have using our poles. Sometimes we have to use solar. But we try to, you know, if we can use the pole, we own most of the poles, so that works for us. And the county put two on their wires by their traffic lights. And we have two inside the vehicles, and those are maintained by our mechanics and the vendor.
I believe the question was with regard to the utilization of the license plates readers. The information that is obtained from the license plates readers are then put into a database. It is either then obtained by the police department to determine if, in fact, certain activity occurs around a certain house or location, or if, in fact, the vehicles were on an alert list that would then notify the departments. And candidly, it's basically the eyes and ears that are fed to a database that, and being the individual who reads a lot of the reports that the commissioner sends, it is very effective in alerting the department of vehicles that have alerts on them or assist the detective division in determining if there are people or activity around a particular location.
Hey, well, you answered the second part.
Commissioner, anything you wanted to add to this, or?
No, they're a great item to use. They're, they also will alert us of vehicles stolen. Then we also use it to help track vehicles. We had a couple of cases of devious activity by male perpetrators against women, and we were able to just use the type of vehicle that was given. And we only had three vehicles match that description on one of our plate readers, and we were able to eliminate two and find a third one, which was the perpetrator. So it adds to our investigative prowess. And as trustee Torino says, it also alerts us that if we have a vehicle that we're looking for, we can actually put a vehicle in that we're looking for. And it also helps us, you know, track certain issues that are going on. And we also, by using those cameras, we are connected to other villages. Many villages have followed us and use flock cameras, and we have actually helped each other solve crimes, because we use the same camera system.
Thank you. Thanks for all the great work the department's doing here.
I got one comment for you, Commissioner. Number one, I think that type of new technology is fantastic, and I think it's a great investment in the, in taking care of the village and protecting the residents. But on a fun and on a great note, I want to compliment you and your staff. I was having dinner Saturday night downtown, and I watched firsthand behind the scenes, when they didn't really see me, how they were operating on Seventh Street, and they were fantastic. They were direct, polite on their game. People that even tried to park in the handicap zones or double park. They were on them. They were all over them, and they were fantastic. They were communicating with the residents. And I mean, I was like, wow, these guys are doing a fantastic job. So a big thumbs up to the boys in blue. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I didn't mention that this is part of that grant for the license plate readers. This is the grant that the board approved. That this is the first step of the $465,000 grant that you approve that we received.
Thank you, Commissioner. Chief Taunton?
Good evening, Mayor, Board of Trustees, Village residents. Fire Department does not have any items on the formal agenda, but happy to answer any questions that may arise. Just some information for the month of August. We responded to over 125 various fire alarms, including our usual Delphi, burn food, car fires, et cetera. A couple tips. As we approach the fall season, everyone starts turning off their air conditioners and start turning on your heat. Keep in mind to have your HVAC system serviced by a licensed professional, and make sure your chimneys are cleaned out before putting the Ulog underneath it. Many people do enjoy fire pits, so please keep in mind to keep those fire pits away from your house at minimum 10 feet and make sure you have a means of extinguishing that fire. God forbid it gets out of hand. As a reminder, it's against village code to burn leaves in your rear yard. Last year, we had numerous residents that were performing open burns that could have potentially caused damage to their homes and others. And lastly, we'd like to thank everyone who attended last Wednesday's 9/11 remembrance ceremony. Everyone's presence helped honor the memory of those who were lost within our community. So thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Chief, and thank you for a wonderful job you did yet again. The department on that ceremony on behalf of the whole board, we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Right, Mr. Fishberg?
Thank you, Mayor. I have one item on, number eight, which are 13 additional park designations, various areas throughout the village. And again, I'd like to thank Mr. Belmer for his help on this project.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Belmer, and thank you, Mr. Fishberg, for your work on it as well, and the whole board for their support on this important project. Right, Mr. Swazi?
Good evening, Mayor, Trustees, residents. Mayor, I have a few items on the agenda tonight scattered about on the formal agenda. There is a board policy on part-time seasonal hourly rates that is placed on there by the recommendation of the Finance and Authorization Committee. It puts words to the policy to give staff guidance on how the part-time rates apply. The next item is item, under consent calendar, item six. This is the ratification of the stipulation agreement for the CSA Supervisors Unit, requesting authorization to approve this. It runs from the period of June 1, 2024, through May 31, 2027. I just want to thank both the village and CSA supervisor negotiating team, General Labor Council. Item number seven, Village Information Technology Specialist One. As you recall, during the budget session, I had requested and worked with the library and with Ryan, our IT specialist, to bring on an aide to assist him four days a week in the library, one day a week. We did hire such a person. He was here a week, and he quit. In reviewing the job, Courtney Rose Blatt and Ryan sat down and discussed some of the feedback. It was really too much of a job for an aide. So we're requesting that instead the board allows to hire a specialist one who can work independently with some supervision and handle the type of issues that we have to deal with here. It would not cost us any money this year because of the timing of the potential hire. If you approve this, there's enough money in the budget to cover the higher salary for this budget year. Next year, it will require an additional $15,000. $3,000, that would be from the library, $12,000 from the village. I want to thank Courtney and Ryan for working on this. Thank you very much. Item number nine is a renewal of our professional services agreement for village or IP phone service, Land Rover network services. One of the best support technicians we've ever run across. Actually renewed that contract. Number 10, engagement professional services, Village Network Support, SourcePass. SourcePass is our big IT partner. They maintain our help desk technical system. They advise us on emerging technologies. They help us virtualize our servers. They help us with budgeting, quarterly onsite technology review, malware, cybersecurity. They help us just keep the network operating. The budget amount was slightly over $9,000 a month, but we actually, this was approved in the budget session at over $9,000 a month, but it's coming in at $87.5925, which is a bit of a savings. The last item, Mayor, is item 11 on the agenda. And on April 16, 1925, the Nassau County Police Department was established. Five months later, one of the original 55 officers, Patrolman John A. Han, was killed on his motorcycle at the intersection of the vicinity of Washington Avenue and Stewart Avenue. In the 100th anniversary next year, they would like to put a plaque there at their cost, and they also would like the board's permission to hold a ceremony in the vicinity on the anniversary date. Commissioner Jackson, I met with the detective who's in charge of this, and we hope the board will support this request. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Any questions?
Here, Ralph, I got one for you. Can you give us a quick update on the toll house? I know the fence is up and materials are getting delivered, just so the residents know what's going on.
Okay, so I was there the other day. I met the contractor last week, myself, Mr. Barone, and Janelle were there, along with the engineer, Andrew Toc, discussing the project, looking over the site. I actually want to kick this to Mr. Janelle, because he's had more direct conversations. But the roof materials were delivered today. They held off because of the expected rain. I believe they're starting tomorrow or Monday. So, Joseph, I'd please ask you to answer trustee's question.
Thank you, Swazi. Yes, they did yesterday and today, and believe tomorrow, they're going to be delivering some material onsite, storing material onsite. The job won't kick off until Monday because of potential rain that would be happening, if any. So the job will start on Monday. I want to thank the chamber for emptying the toll house out. So that's all complete. It's empty, and it's ready to start work, hopefully Monday. And the scope of work, those of you who may not know, it's a full roof removal and installation. Doing fascia, trim around the fascia around the building. They're going to paint the building itself on the outside or window corking. We're going to restore the two columns out front there, and all the interior is getting redone as far as the flooring, carpeting, painting, any patching walls, all updated LED lights inside the building and outside the building.
Terrific, Joseph. Thank you so much for that. Appreciate it.
And I just also mentioned, the Highway Division under John Barone has been very helpful in moving the items out of the toll house. They've also been helping us here, the village hall moved things to the cottages and rearranged the records. So thanks, John, to the team over there.
Thank you. John, thank you. Appreciate it, buddy.
All right, thank you, Mr. Swazi. All right, so are there any? I know trustees commented during any additional trustee comments at this time? Any items? Sure.
This past weekend was my 50th high school reunion. And so on Friday night, it was the Garden City Bar Crawl, and we went to a bunch of places. And then on Saturday was Tullamore Park, and we did an early version of the games that take place in a couple of weeks. And then we're at the Nassau Bar Association. I cannot tell you how many people came up to me to praise how wonderful Garden City looked. They were so pleased with how Seventh Street was. They thought it was so impressive that our policemen were all on Seventh Street. They didn't, I did kind of fill them in on what was going on there a little bit. But they were, they thought the stores looked great. They thought the restaurants were wonderful. They thought the way the buildings and the flowers and the green space was just so impressive. And they were all just extremely proud to be coming from Garden City. And they were, they couldn't stop talking about it. So I just want to let you know, so nice job, everybody.
Yeah, I'll second that. Like I mentioned earlier on Saturday night, my wife mentioned she's like the vibe and the buzz in town on Saturday night, because we tried to get into every restaurant, because, of course, I didn't make a reservation, because I forgot. We ended up going to Pizzeria G, which was fantastic and sitting outside. But that'll tell you, every, we literally went in and out of every restaurant. Franklin, Seventh, it was jammed. And but just the atmosphere, young people, older people, it was just about as good as I've ever seen it. So it was just, it was great. So great job all around, everybody, and we really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you to the village staff. And Michelle, great to share those positive comments. And I think it's a perfect lead into a brief update from our Chamber of Commerce. Mr. Walton, who's in the room?
Good evening, Mayor, Board of Trustees. It's great to hear we're thriving, that's for sure. Thank everybody that came for me. Thank everybody. It really is great that the seated government shows the business community that they're there and they're supporting it. It really means something to them. So you may not recognize how important it is, but it really is pretty good. Toll House is empty, guys, thank you. It was a Herculean task, but it's done. Quick opening, as we know, the taproom is opened, and it's cooking. Lagufta has opened, and we know just what you said. It's doing well. Ivory Room, we had the ribbon cutting, and it's doing great. There is a lease executed across the street from Leo's, in the Little Corner Store, and it is a pet food store, a high-end pet food store. The lease is executed. They've drawn it. It's signed, so it's going forward. Joseph, I don't know if they Joseph, I don't know if they got to you yet. Okay, and Core Life has a lease out for Tata. It's not executed yet, I believe it will be executed. That's a twenty-six chain bakery out of the state of Massachusetts, and they're coming in and they're taking it. Yeah. Okay. And everybody says exactly what you just said. It's, yeah. Yeah, I know, I heard, I've heard. So, anyway, it looks like it's going forward. As a note, one of our citizens passed away that brought a great deal of recognition to the community and over the years donated a lot of his time and commitment. So, a moment for Nelson Demille, he really did help the village in a lot of different ways. I'm working with Judy and Vinnie and obviously Joseph, I'm hoping to have that meeting set up. I've been talking to the business community, and I think it really is not just be restaurant-centric. I think it should be all the businesses in the community. It should be retail, it should be anybody that has a business on the street level, on Franklin, New Hyde Park Road, or on Seventh Street, will offer the invitation, tell them how important it is to attend, but I think a great deal of them will attend. And I explained to them it was going to be a productive meeting, it was not a meeting to look at what's wrong, it's a meeting to look at where we're going to make everything better, and they were very receptive about it. Also, just so you know, East Rockaway Coffee still has some issues. Interestingly enough, I think they're almost past the fire marshal issue, because they're now complaining about having difficulty securing employment, please. Chief, thank you for posting the flags on nine eleven. We had a little miscommunication, and Boy Scouts when they do it didn't fall through. Tom from Gordon from the village was going to help, but the fire department posted the flags and the Boy Scouts retired the colors at the end of the day. So, thank you for that, that's very important for the community. We're working on a restaurant retail week for the village, and I've actually have, I have a consulting meet, a consultant coming to meet with me who does this. I'll meet with them and see where it goes. I had a meeting with another group of consultants who I absolutely would not consider using, but anyway, we'll see what we can do. But that requires our business community being involved in it, which I'll try to, when we have that meeting, we'll try to do it. Homecoming, trustee Ty, trustee Courtney, I think you guys have done some privileged of, this should prove to be our best in many, 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 many years. I did personally go to every, I think we'll be pleased with the outcome, I think they'll be committed, and I think they'll put flags and banners, and even at Iveron tonight, they had a Trojan flag up. I don't know if you saw it on the tree. Okay, so they're trying to do, do as best they can. I spoke to village clerk today. Delphi is having that ring ceremony on October eighteenth at six PM. And actually, they were calling me to ask me to just have it limited, they wanted to focus on the student athlete versus having everybody come in. So, I think perhaps maybe the mayor, myself, somebody else will try to limit it. Maybe we can have a dual certificate from the chamber and the village, or independent village and the chamber. So, I think they just want to curtail it just for the students. I think that's what they were trying to aim at. And that is really it, and we have a ribbon cutting tomorrow. If you could please make it, if you can't, I understand it's a Friday and it's during the business day. And thank you, Mr. Paul Blake, for helping me with the homecoming, I appreciate it, I know it's different. And as a note of humor, I believe the, first of all, I really need to say this truly, I watched our police commissioner go from point A in the village to point B in the village like a gazelle. Okay, I didn't, I didn't know he had it in him, but I will tell you, the speed level which he articulated was absolutely amazing. I truly believe, my interns also told me during the week this week on Instagram and TikTok, there's virtually no stuff about Friday night, so hopefully this Friday night will prove to be a, you know, a limited number of people coming. We'll see, I know, I understand your speculation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Welton, appreciate everything you do. All right, so we'll move now to citizen comments on agenda items. Are there any citizen comments on agenda items in the room? Yes, Mr. Rose?
I know the commissioner was talking about on the agenda of having multiple license plate readers brought into the village. My question is, how useful are license plate readers if people carry their bikes on the back of their cars and block the license plates? Are they useful or not? And see, what I've done is I went to a meeting, in fact, our mayor was there, and we, Assemblyman Rob was there, and I've been trying for years now to have New York State Motor Vehicle Bureau issue an auxiliary license plate that could be put on the back of trailers and bicycle racks and so on, so that they can leave the regular plate on the car and just have this auxiliary plate. And of course, New York State could charge for the fee for the new plate. I can't seem to get anywhere. They're saying that nobody's complaining about it, the Lord is, doesn't seem to be complaining about it and so on. So, I'd like to ask Commissioner Jackson if he feels that if there's a problem, maybe he can contact our representative and say that, yeah, there's an issue there, and my suggestion of having an auxiliary plate, which I understand is in many other states, is a good idea.
Commissioner Jackson, do you want to comment?
You want mine?
First of all, if a license plate is covered, for any means, we do stop the vehicle and we should take a license plate reader to pick up the front plate also, so we would have a problem if the back plate is blocked or an out-of-state plate. Well, we do issue tickets, and sometimes with bike racks and stuff, we will issue a warning, because people don't, most of the time do not mean to cover their plate. So, and if the plate's not in the right spot, usually on a bike rack, our officers usually, as soon as they can see the plate, it will be recorded, and I believe it's, it does works when it goes through the tunnels and the bridges. But I agree, you can't block the plate, and we do take some type of action when we see it.
Well, I'm talking about you go into any of the parking lots, and all the cars are parked in headfirst, as written, as coded in the village. Now, if you have a bike, a bike rack on the back of your car, you're doing the right thing, but now you have somebody driving up and down the lanes with the license plate reader, they can't read the plate. You can't see the front plate either, because it's between the two cars.
Yeah, but we do, we do write tickets for blocked plates, or if we feel that it deserves a warning, we write a warning, so we do have a record of the plate them.
But my issue was, in fact, the issue that I had with Assemblyman Rob, we don't have to issue tickets if they just give us the auxiliary plate, which is so much easier to do.
I have no problem with that.
Okay, maybe you can send a letter in or something like that and help me out, because I'm seemingly the only one that's addressing the issue.
I'm on the, I'm on the state chief's board, and I'm also the representative to the governor's draft safety committee, so I will bring it up to the committee.
Well, I appreciate that, because I've been, I've been in touch with Thompson, which was a state senator, I even contacted our governor, whatever, and haven't got a reply from either one, I might as be talking to you, the bottle of water here, because no one seems to want to talk to you now, because the elections are coming up and whatever, and I got so angry at Assemblyman Rob, because the aide there says, well, he's not really taking on anything now because the new elections are coming up, and I says, it's five months away. What, has he taken a sabbatical for five months until the elections come?
Right, thank you.
Anything you could do, I think a lot of people would appreciate, because I don't feel that, I would love to use my bike and take it to places and cycle around and so on, but I'm fearful that if I could stop for something, I can get a ticket, and that ticket is sizable. Plus, they give you two points on your license, so it's a couple hundred dollar ticket, so it's so easy to remedy. No one seems to, you know, want to speak to just the individual taxpayer.
So, we've heard, thank you for sharing that, and obviously, that's something at a state level, but it sounds like Commissioner Jackson will pass that along.
Speak to him, if he wants me there or whatever, I'd be beating on heads over there.
Thank you. Any other citizen comments on agenda items in the room? Any citizen comments on agenda items on Zoom? All right, I don't see any. And we'll move on to approval of the minutes. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes from the August fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four meeting? All in favor? That passes. One abstention, six yeses, and do we have a motion to, on the formal agenda, to approve or the board policy on part-time and seasonal hourly rates? All in favor? That passes unanimously. As far as the consent calendar, I am going to remove number four, or actually, I'll, do we have a motion to defer number four, deferred compensation audit report to our Monday special meeting, so that everyone, I know that was just circulated, so everyone has a chance to review? All in favor? All right, so that item is deferred to Monday evening, and is there a motion to approve the consent calendar minus the deferred item number four? All in favor? Consent calendar is passed. All right, at this time, are there any citizen comments on non-agenda items in the room? Yes?
Hi, Bob Wolf, sixty-three Fairmount. I just have a question. There's a, on the official village website, there's a tab for St. Paul's update, which has not been updated since it was put on there, yet if you go to the village Facebook page, that's where all the news is. Now, why, why are there two locations to read about St. Paul?
Thank you for bringing that to our attention. I am working with some other trustees on communication, and I think we will update that. By all means, we will make sure we get the updated information onto the website, apologies for that. Any other comments in the room on non-agenda items?
Hi, my name is Carl Russo, six Edgmere Road, and I'd like to direct this to trustee Chester. Two weeks ago, you wrote an article in the Garden City paper about the Edgmere Road Firehouse, and you stated that in July of last year was when you first got involved as the fire commissioner. But I just, you know, and I understand that, I understand that's when you started, okay, but in, in February of two thousand eighteen, the village hired the Cameron Engineering to do a study on the three firehouses, and in their study, they said, although there is nothing really drastic with the firehouse, it should be addressed as soon as possible, okay? At that time, we had a couple of trustees that didn't really care about the firehouse, and one of them said, knock it down and put up a steel shed, what do I care, okay? And I believe it was the Western Property Owners Association that got involved with this, because this is their area, and they started a committee to save the firehouse, which I was part of, okay? And we, at that time, Cosmo wasn't the mayor, he wasn't, wasn't a trustee or anything, but he's an architect, and he drew up some plans and everything. And one of the reasons why he did that was because was told that, well, if we leave the firehouse the way it is, we're not going to be able to put a new fire engine in the house, and they were going to buy three new fire engines, which I believe they never bought, and, and he said, well, if we put two wings on the existing firehouse, you know, you don't have to knock down the firehouse, you can keep it up, and you can just extend it, all right? Now, I'm not endorsing his plans or whatever, but he just said it could be done, all right? And this was before he was the mayor and everything. And then, I don't know what happened after that, okay? And years and years have gone by, and nothing has really happened. And in your letter, you know, you state that whether we decide to completely renovate both floors of the firehouse, or renovate just the first floor of the firehouse, and mortar the second floor, or take the building down and build a one-story firehouse, we are back to two thousand eighteen. We, where did we go? And, and that's one thing, and the other thing that I want to state is, this engineering company that was hired, and then they, you know, said they couldn't do the job and everything, and they're, and they're doing architectural plans. Well, I'm not an engineer, I'm not an architect. How do you do architectural plans if you don't know what you're doing? So, the money is going to them, who, you know, and, and I understand, this is the problem when you have people that are only in office for a couple of years or whatever, just like St. Paul's, which is a problem that's been going on for thirty years, and you know, things just get shifted around and everything, but can somebody give me an answer of what's happening? That's all.
Well, that's why, just about every meeting, I asked Building Superintendent Jivenello for an update on it. Unfortunately, the original architect engineer came back with a bid a lot higher when they originally did it, and so we went to Los Ardos. We seem to be at least on track to get some numbers, I can tell you that. And yes, it's frustrating. I mean, it was six years ago, so obviously, it's deteriorated a lot more. We did get one new fire truck, which should be in, I think, maybe by the end of the year or if I'm correct, chief. So, we definitely need for two fire trucks in there. It's a question of which direction we go, and based on the cost that we get, and the cost that it's going to be for the taxpayers. So, I've tried to stay on top of this, and Superintendent Jivenello has as well. I think most of the trustees have been in the firehouse. If anyone who hasn't, welcome me to take a look at it. So, it's kind of upsetting to look at, but we're going to try to do something about it, that's all I can tell you, and I've been pushing it as hard as I can.
And I appreciate you saying that.
I'd like to just make one comment on it, because I think everyone may want to chime in, but I think as a group, we've decided we should gather all the information and have a more informed discussion. I absolutely understand where you're coming from and your thoughts, because, you know, we've all kind of been along and watching this process of, let's save it, but it's going to cost you much, you know, how much the numbers were surprised, so we will be back, you'll be hearing more on that. I will say that some things have been done, it has been debated, there has been work done, it's not that nothing's been done since then, but I think we're all well aware of the fact that we need to get to a conclusion on the firehouse for our fire department, and we're going to be sitting down and discussing when we have some more concrete information with cost estimates, and the discussion will include members of the board of trustees and the fire chief and village staff. So, thanks for bringing it up. I wish we don't have something better to report, but we're all going to work together on this.
Thank you.
That was my whole point, to stay on top of it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Carl.
Yes, another comment on a non-agenda item, Mr. Salem?
George Salem. I noticed in the schedule of trustee meetings, in October, there's only one meeting. Is there any reason for that? Usually, there are two, except for the summer.
There was, there was a big discussion when we made up the schedule, and it had to do with the calendar and holidays, so. It was Yom Kippur was the first, yeah, the first Thursday, or the second Thursday's Yom Kippur, the fourth is Halloween, oh, I'm sorry, Rosh Hashanah though is the first, so it was, it was, it was an issue with the holidays, and when we discussed this, there was the acknowledgement that if there is a need for business to be, you know, things to be voted on, we can always add another meeting, but that was the reason, because of the falling of the holidays.
I thought you were considering October part of the summer.
We wish.
You need an extended summer. I have a question about the senior center flooring. I play, I play bridge there every week. That floor is a mess, and it's That floor is a mess and it's really dangerous. People walking around with canes and crutches and they have these, the rolling floor. We're asking for trouble, I think, in terms of someone having an accident. I'm wondering if you're considering possibly closing the parts of the senior center that are dangerous.
So, uh, you know, I want to thank trustee Muldoon, who has, I know, visited and been working closely with the staff to, it is not a simple fix, as you may think it was, you know. Um, it also is weather dependent. So there'll be, you know, terrible condition of the floor and then the weather changes and it's fine. So um, that is a, a point to take. And I'm sure Mr. Blake will talk about that perhaps though there'd be a scenario if there was disruption of the floor. Perhaps there should be times when we close it down. We'll consider that. Until this is all squared away. I don't expect in the cold weather that we're going to be having problems. It will probably be when the heat and humidity return that this will be a problem. And I think the hope is that we will have it resolved by then.
That's exactly correct. As soon as the temperatures drop, the floor settles down and the few, few bumps that we have go away. We're also hoping, as trustee Muldoon pointed out, we, we spent a lot of time with Mr. Givanello, Mr. Broni and my maintenance staff over there two weeks ago. And um, Mr. Muldoon has a lot of experience in this area and so does Mr. Givanello, Mr. Broni. We are all confident that the insulation of the dehumidifiers will allow that environment to stay cool and dry throughout the year, which will keep the floor down. And again, there are three small areas in the floor right now that have a slight bounce to them. They are not bumpy. It is not like a skateboard park. And once those floor areas are trimmed at the corners and the dehumidifiers go in and the temperatures drop, we are confident that the floor will settle down, be level and give us useful service for many years. And I would yield the, the floor to trustee Muldoon, who has a lot more experience with dehumidifiers, moisture in floors than I do.
Yeah. Thanks, Paul. I appreciate it. So Mr. Salem, uh, good point there and thanks for bringing it up. Um, I do think, John, on the, uh, on the follow-up that we talked about in regards to those relief cuts and, and trimming back, especially where the doors are, because that's, that's seems to be one of the big pressure points that Paul is referring to. Um, and I've, I've said it, and again, we can do it. If, if, if that company doesn't play ball and they're going to take too long, I, I, I mentioned it to, to John, I will absolutely donate my time and my guys' time to go over there and trim that floor back and put in those reducers at no charge to the village, uh, just to get it done as soon as we can. Just so again, we're relieving the pressure off that floor that right now is still creating some smaller areas to, to elevate, but nothing like the middle of summer when the humidity level, especially this summer, was through the roof and the humidity level in that, in that basement area below the wood floors is like in the, probably in the high nineties most of the year. So it's just saturated with moisture. The underside of the floor absorbs that moisture and then the floors that sit on that surface expand and they have no place to expand right now. So what do they do? They buckle. So uh, we definitely have the uh, the, the solution to the problem. But I'm willing to chip in and help to get that resolved as soon as we can besides the actual installation of the dehumidifier, which is more of a, a summer and humidification issue, not this time of the year. So we'll do everything we can to get it done as soon as we can and uh, and give that place a good washing and cleaning for you guys.
The very outlook for when this all be finished? Is there a schedule that when you think?
John right now is working with the flooring company that originally did the work to have them come back and basically correct the issue. Um, they're not playing ball right now, uh, the, from what I know. And if they continue not to play ball, I'm here to help and, and rectify and take care of that problem as best we possibly can for you guys.
No lawsuit? No lawsuit to get them back? Yeah.
That was raised. Yeah. So we will uh, so Mr. Salem, we appreciate, we understand the frustration residents are feeling. And I think we've got a, a good team on it and a plan. And uh, thank you for coming and raising it. And uh, we hope never to have to close it for a future flo- flooring issue.
Okay. Um, I have a question for um, Mr. Blake. I heard a rumor that the board is seriously considering artificial turf for St. Paul's. And even nightlights, I heard. It's crazy rumors.
There has been some suggestion by some of the youth sports groups and some of the residents in town that artificial turf at some portion of the St. Paul's field would be useful in helping to increase the uh, capacity of games that we could have at that facility without damaging the natural turf. There is currently no proposal before any board that I know of to turf the fields or to put in lights. And I think a strong message was sent by the Recreation Commission uh, last Thursday night when a, a long and uh, very positive and informative discussion was held. And the bottom line and the end of the discussion was we have a company that has been paid a good amount of money to do a survey and make recommendations. And nobody should be jumping the gun until we've received and digested and taken a good, hard look at the report from BCI.
Could you tell us your own view, Paul?
Uh, my, my view is that turf would be uh, would be useful if it was put in the right location. I, I would have no comment on the lights. I, my personal opinion is that that would be a very tough sell in that area. And uh, frankly, I'd like to see lights just confined to one or two locations in the village. I don't think we need to start spreading them all over. But that is for the eight wise people on the dais to decide.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Salem. Anyone else in the room with a comment on a non-agenda item?
Good evening, trustees. Robert Hur is one eleven Cherry Valley Avenue. My comments today deal with Adelphi University. And village resources dedicated to supporting Adelphi, Adelphi University represent a burden on taxpayers. And as such, the Board of Trustees needs to recover these costs from Adelphi. Adelphi's burden includes police services, fire department services, sewer services. I'm not sure if we provide trash collection to them or if they need to use a third party like Jamaica Ash and other items that I've likely missed like the Adelphi buses that often park at the community pool. I doubt that they're charged anything for that. Since the village is currently preparing its annual financial statements, an itemized schedule of costs incurred to support Adelphi should be prepared based on the number of police and fire department calls to Adelphi and an allocation for Adelph- Adelphi's usage of sewer and trash services. In addition to these direct costs, allocations for employee benefits, which are included in other unallocated expenses should also be attributed to Adelphi as these expenses are not allocated to the village's departments. With a reasonable estimate of the true costs of providing services to Adelphi, the Board of Trustees will be in a good position to negotiate with Adelphi's representatives to recapture a significant cost, significant part of the cost that we're currently incurring. Um, and it is customary in many areas of this kind, of this country for private universities to contribute to the local community, like the village or town that they're part of. And Adelphi, I believe, is doing rather well. And the village could definitely use the money to pay for roads and other capital expenditures that we definitely need to do, which we're currently bonding as opposed to paying out of our normal recurring revenues. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for your comment. I don't think it's appropriate really for me to comment on this at the meeting. We are evaluating and scheduling a meeting, but thank you for coming.
I recall in the past that, that, and this was, I think it was in the spring. I know it's been mentioned at this meeting, I think Mayor Flanagan, you brought it up or another trustee, that you were working on going to Adelphi and asking them to contribute to the village.
Yes.
But I guess nothing has happened yet. So, and I don't know what, I don't know, leverage you have over them or incentive they have to cooperate. I'm not sure of the whole situation. Um, and then the other issue, um, which I believe would be appropriate if they don't cooperate. There are certain things currently that the village bundles into village taxes that could be unbundled and billed separately because many municipalities bill separately for trash and bill separately for sewer. Um, so um, I'm just mentioning that. I don't know if you thought of that angle of attack with them. Um, so anyway, that was all that I had.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it. Anyone else in the room with any comment on a non-agenda item? Yes. Mr. Rose.
Good evening again. Act two, I'll be uh, uh, several of my neighbors and friends in the village, uh, contacted me because they knew I was coming to the meeting tonight. And a lot of them are angry and disappointed at the village uh, authorizing the expenditure of fifty-three thousand five hundred dollars on power washing the streets in the commercial area. Uh, especially around where the, where the restaurants are and so on. Um, just want to say that uh, under subsection one forty-eight dash eleven, maintenance of premises. Outdoor dining areas and adjacent areas shall be periodically cleaned, kept refuse free. The outdoor dining area and adjacent areas shall be swept and washed down each night just prior to closing and at other times as needed. So the question they brought up to me is, is why did this happen? Why is, why do we spend all this money? Due to the fact that if you look at who's paying the tab, about ninety percent of the taxes come from residents. Ten percent, about ten percent comes from commercial property owners. And only a certain amount of commercial property owners got the benefit of this power wash. So you're looking now, maybe about two percent got the, got the power wash and ninety-eight percent of us paid for it. And we're not too pleased with that. And so I don't know, the, the answer, obviously, it's, I hate to say water under the bridge, but uh, uh, this shouldn't have happened. If they're, if the places are dirty or not kept up, they should be uh, uh, summons issued like they do for any homeowner who has a cracked sidewalk or or the sidewalk is raised by a tree uh, root or the uh, uh, the uh, grass on the property is too high, we could summons this word. And we have to answer summons in thirty days. If there was a problem in these areas, they didn't get, they not only didn't get a summons, but they got preferential treatment. And a lot of uh, residential homeowners are saying that now. Are they second class even though we're paying ninety percent of the tab?
Thank you for your comment, Mr. Rose. Appreciate it. All right. Is there anyone else in the room with a comment on a non-agenda item? Anyone on Zoom with a comment on a non-agenda item? Do we have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Yes. Sorry. I'll just try to do this quick. Steve Alardi, Meadow Street. I, I, I noticed on, on the corner of Tremont and Willow, um, several months ago, a, a large oak tree was removed. And I know a couple of meetings back, a resident came to, to um, raise an issue with the village about the grass never being, the area never being seeded again by the village. And then I noticed that the village, I assume, came, planted seeds and put down topsoil. The grass all came in nice and green. And then a couple of weeks ago, I noticed it's all torn up again and the sidewalk flags were replaced because they were raised by that oak tree before the oak tree was removed. So a couple of questions. I mean, did the village go and expend that money to, to seed and put topsoil down because the resident came and made a complaint? One. And two, were those sidewalk flags replaced at the homeowner's expense or at the villagers?
All right. So thank you for your comment, um, Mr. Alardi. This sounds like a, a personal matter and I, I don't think this is uh, something we're going to be answering tonight. I don't know who's, who's, who we're talking about. I don't think this was your home. So but uh, um, thank you for your comment. And we have uh, DPW here and it's been brought to their attention. And I think it was actually already brought to their attention. If I recall, there have been, uh, there has been correspondence with this homeowner. So thank you though for your comment. Any other comments on non-agenda items? All right. Do we have a motion to adjourn the meeting? All in favor? Meeting is adjourned. Good evening. Thank you everyone for coming.